Call the Board of Alderman meeting to order for the City of Warrenton for November 6th, 2012. Before I get started, I want to make a couple of changes to the agenda. Item 11A on the hiring of a new police officer, I want to move that up to item number seven. That way, we won't retain this gentleman here any longer tonight than he has to be and let him get back on the road. Item number 13, Michelle Slinter, she went home sick today, so she's not going to be here and give her a report on the economic developer. At this time, we normally do the place of allegiance. I've had Alderman Kendall, allegiance in the place.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the principle of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to welcome everyone to the Board of Alderman meeting. It's always good to see faces of the audience and see people that have city business that have their best interests. First item that we need to do is the approval of the minutes from the open and executive session minutes on October 16th.
Make a motion to approve the open executive session minutes of October 16th, 2012?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the open and executive session minutes of October 16th, 2012. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 3B, regular board minutes from October 16th, 2012.
Make a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from October 16th, 2012.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Dyer to approve the regular board minute meetings from October 16th, 2012. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item four on the agenda is hearing from the public that we have a customary procedure that we allow anyone in the audience to address the board. We limit that to five minutes, keeping your remarks civil and positive. So if anybody would like to come forward and address the board, please do so at this time.
I think most of you know me. I've been very familiar with the city and obviously involved for considerable time. Alderman, Mayor Dyer, city clerk, and city staff. It's been about a little over six months since my last time in office and my last time in this room while the board was in session. And I just thought it was appropriate to stop by this evening and recognize the hard work that I think goes unnoticed by our city employees and our city staff. The things that go on here in City Hall that nobody knows about. And I'm sure by this time, Mayor Dyer, you've seen the amount of work and the work ethic that we do have within our staff. But what really brought me here this evening is the good job that I see our city crews and our maintenance staff doing. I've been especially impressed with the stormwater project that the city undertook on Main Street. I think it's a huge improvement, although I'm sure Mr. Gevers understands he has to keep the leaves and the trash out of the grate system to make it work, but it does work. I also want to thank Alderman Tallow and Alderman Cornell. When I left office, I became aware of where the project was stopping and mentioned that there were some concerns, I think residents to the south of that. And I don't know what caused the change, but the change order looked to me like it went into effect quickly and they continued on with the project and I think have a much better result. And so I just really wanted to stop by and say that even though I know, Mayor Dyer, you got a baptism in fire by fire this summer with the heat and water shortages and Alderman Cornell, I know that there was probably a lot more phone calls than you might have thought there might be in that position. But I just want to say that I think the board and the mayor, I think you made the right decisions. I know they're tough decisions and sometimes they're unpopular, but I think that the city continues to do well and I think it's in good hands with Alderman and the mayor that we have here today. So I just think it's important that many times you hear from people when they're unhappy and I think it's, we as citizens owe our elected officials occasionally to tell them when things are going right. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate these comments.
Thank you, Mr. Costello.
Just to comment back to what you said about our street department and our crews, we're very proud of those guys. We think they do a great job. We think Mr. Gevers does a great job overseeing and representing those people and very professional people out there. They all know what they're doing very well.
Thank you.
Mayor, I did forget, that's one thing, and I know guys familiar with it. Michelle Harvey, I guess at the end of his street, before you go onto his private property, there's some posts there, some yellow...
Retaining posts?
Yeah.
Like six of them?
I guess there's some question, who put them there? I mean, I think they...
They've been there for a while. I don't know who put them there.
The city crews put some snow there. He'd like them removed. He's asked me to do that, but I don't think he's quite sure. And I'll be more than happy if they track it down and pull them out. There's these four inch...
I could take a guess and say probably who put them there. It was probably Lowell.
Yeah, I feel I don't know. I'd say it's been there 15, 20 years probably, but...
No, the city staff put them there.
They did?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll take a look at those sometime and maybe Mr. Gevers and I can drive by and put our heads together.
If it's something the city can't help, we weren't happy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments that they'd like to address the city? Hearing none, we're going to move on to Board of Alderman comments. Anybody from the board want to address anything to the public?
Well, I just hope everybody exercised their right today and went and vote. Went and vote and cast their ballots and it's an important thing. It's one of the freedoms that we do have in this country. There's a lot of countries which they had that freedom and it's important.
Good point. Anybody else? We're going to move on to the mayor's report. I have a couple of things. One thing, I wanted to thank Alderman Kendall for filling in for me at the last board meeting. I was laid up with appendicitis episode and was hospitalized, couldn't be here, so I thank her for doing that. Also want to thank the board and the city staff for their card that they sent while I was in the hospital and the flowers. I really appreciated that. That meant a lot to me. A couple of other things that's going on and what you know about the, the staff is in the process of interviewing recreational directors for the city. You know that that position is open due to the resignation of our previous director. And I think you might correct me on that. I think you all have eight people that slotted for interviews. I know Alderman Cornell sat in on a few of those. I've had the opportunity to sit in on one. I'm going to try to sit in on a few more on Thursday. Very impressed with the quality of the applicants, that we had some probably 40 applicants. Am I right on that?
That's correct.
All eight people are professional people in positions that we're requiring right now. So I think it's going to be tough to come up and select the number one candidate. So just wanted to share that with the public. A couple of other things I want to talk about. One of the things we require department chairmans to do is attend ethics training once a year or every couple of years. And we kicked around that conversation the other day and really wanted to see if the board would be interested in having an ethics seminar one evening, about a 45-minute seminar put on by the Missouri State Ethics Commission. We thought, you know, if we require our staff to do that, maybe we as board members and elected officials, maybe we should attend one of those also. So we're kind of trying to put something together. They'd like about 30 people to attend. We thought maybe we would invite the neighboring cities like Truesdale and Wright City and Winchville and see whether their board members want to attend and come up with like 30. So we'll get back to you and let you know how that's coming about. Only other thing I wanted to bring up in my comments was the Greater Warrenton Economic Development Council. I know Michelle's not here tonight. I thought I would share with you just briefly, I was invited to a roundtable discussion with them a couple of weeks ago and I'm learning this terminology that goes with economic development. They use terms like, "We have 12 things in the pipeline." Well, I didn't know what 12 things in the pipeline meant, but it means they're dealing with 12 different companies that have interests in relocating to this area and so forth. They announced at that meeting that they recently closed on a piece of property which happens to be in Truesdale, almost in Warrenton, right across the street from, how would I describe that? Kind of across the street from where the Elks Lodge is. There was a building there that belonged to Russ Construction. You know where I'm talking about? That's recently been purchased by an out-of-town company and it's going to be somewhat of a food distribution company, starting off pretty small, but going to add more employees and grow. So that was a positive thing. I thought that was neat. They haven't been in operation of a full year and they've already landed one company coming to town. They have a second company that's committed to the county also. They wouldn't tell me exactly where, but they haven't closed on that building yet. So that's going to be announced here, I'm going to say, within the next 30 days. So I thought it was kind of remarkable that they could accomplish that in the short time that they've been in business. I listened to the schedule for Josh Beck, the director of that group, and how busy he is and how many different places he's scheduled to visit. The first part of 2013, he's gone almost all the time to different trade shows, to different economic development conventions and so forth. And I'm thinking, as individual cities, none of us could afford to send our economic developer to that many places and make that many contacts. But by pooling everybody together and pooling everybody's resources, you can do that type of thing. So I think you're going to be surprised about the great things that come out of that organization. And that's all I've got. I just want to share those few comments with you. I'm going to move, oh, on the mayor's report on item 6A, I want to talk about the January 1st meeting, which happens to be New Year's Day. I don't know how many of you are interested in holding our normal Board of Alderman meeting on New Year's Day. So we might want to think about moving that. I just wanted the board to be thinking about this, you know, what works out for you? Would you want to go to the second? Would you want to move it to the Wednesday after? Would you want to skip that meeting altogether? Give it some thought and maybe share that information back with either Melody or Terry and let me know what works out for everybody. I don't think anybody here wants to meet on New Year's Day. Am I right on that?
No.
All right. I'm ready to move on to item seven, request to close Thurman Street from Main Street to Oak Street from 5:00 to 7:00.
No, no, no. Remember this one here.
Oh, I got a new one. I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun. Okay. This is the one I changed the agenda on, so.
That's why we're here.
That's why you're here to help me. I got two people that look after me.
Plus you got somebody in the audience.
That's right. Item number seven, the recommendation for approval to hire Charles Lancy as a full-time police officer at $15.60 an hour. Chief, do you want to introduce him or anything?
I certainly can, because we get a motion and it's over.
All right. We'll entertain a motion at this time.
On that personnel.
You want to do that personnel?
I'll do that. I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Charles Lancy as a full-time police officer at $15.60 an hour.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the hiring of Charles Lancy as a full-time police officer at the rate of $15.60 an hour. Roll call, vote please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carries six to nothing. Now would you like to introduce yourself?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's definitely my pleasure to introduce our new police officer, Charles Lancy.
Welcome. Glad to have you. Here's a large thank you bag.
Mr. Lancy, I had the opportunity to review your personnel packet and approve that hiring and I think that not only with your police training, but your life experiences, I think you'll be an asset to the department. Your haircut gave you away as the new police officer in the room.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Very good.
Your daughter's adorable.
She is. Love that red hair.
Or any hair.
Oh, shit. Hey, we don't need any comments from you.
Now can we move on to item eight, request to close Thurman Street from Main Street to Oak Street from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.?
Oh, see, you spoke too soon.
Main Street from Thurman to Morgan, 5:30 to 7:00. All right.
I think you're ready.
Reverend Emmerst.
Yeah.
Lay it on us.
Well, just as a part of the Warrenton Downtown Association, has been president for the past couple, two, three months for Hometown Christmas. This year, in addition to all that we have offered in the past, we're expanding it, growing it out a little bit, involving more people in the community and involving more businesses up and down Main Street. One of those things this year, from what I understand, is to kind of hearken back to old when we had a Christmas parade in this town. And unfortunately, you know, this year, we did not coordinate well with Jonesburg, so we are competing on that same day with their parade, which they've had now for two years, which we will not make that mistake next year. But still, with those involved, marching band and the fire department, as well as other people who've committed for that parade, we have a larger one than we did last year. So let's focus on the positive. We didn't have one last year. So all of those additional people and everything coming in, we hope will just really bolster the involvement and the activity. So for that, in working with the chief and city staff, we decided that a request to close Thurman Street, which is right next to church, between our properties, which will be the staging ground, starting at 5:00 and will actually face them against the one-way. We do the tree lighting and at church with our big tree there in front. That's at 5:45 and that ends at 6:00 and then the idea is to work with the city, have all the lights off on Main Street. The road will be closed at that time and then right at 6:00, we light it all up and sing a Christmas carol. And then 6-ish, that parade will turn, after everyone kind of disperses a little bit there, that parade will turn the corner and we'll just head on down to here, which is where you'll have activities in front and it'll end right here on Morgan. Then, once that all is dispersed, we'll walk up and down, clean up any messes, and then we'll resume traffic again. So Chief has that plan. I'll leave that to him.
How many floats are you anticipating?
Right now, we're still getting more. I know of, right now, we have about eight to 10 confirmed with the marching band. I've talked to the dance variations group, who will be a new group and they'll actually put on a little routine at the Bell Star for 30 minutes, as well as talking to several Girl Scout troops to kind of walk. I mean, anybody with a chance to put the lanyards on you that glow and everything and walk down the street at night and dress up in costume, I think is a fun idea, right? And they may have some cars that go with them. Jessica Channuel at Shelter Insurance is kind of spearheading the parade. So that's something you know you would like to sign up for, talk to Jessica Channuel.
I think you all, I see new enthusiasm. You've kind of expanded the group and gotten larger and gotten more people involved. I think that's cool.
I'm hoping.
And somebody's really smart about having the parade going down Main Street instead of up Main Street.
I can only bet myself on that so many times.
So get eye about it.
I'll give credit to Mr. Clark. Ready to think of that, sir.
I think you're going to make the motion, John.
That's right. I think that's good, too. Any other comments on it? Is that all you have?
Well, afterwards, you know, a closing comment really before the vote is, again, I've done this for two, three months and we've done Hometown Christmas in the past and Brenda Sue, Alloeez, and Valuable, the help that, you know, they've asked me and Eric Schmidt at the Methodist Church, really, you know, is coordinating this and making a lot of the calls. You know, I've gotten great response from all the businesses that I've spoken with and really with Chief Audi Shell and Michelle and Melody and Terry. You know, an email, one day, wait, I mean, everyone's done really well and made this easy. Efficient, responsible, respectful, easy, right? Isn't it great when it works out? So just kind of a thank you to all of them.
All the businesses are aware that this was going to happen? I mean, we get some complaints once in a while from, somebody says, "Well, we didn't know you were going to close Main Street for that day and it might affect my business."
Was the idea of the street closure in the record in that write-up on Thursday? I think it was, to close it for the parade.
Yes.
Or at least the parade was mentioned, so by logic of, you would assume, which maybe you shouldn't do.
Never assume.
Yeah.
Can't assume.
But the marching band, but everyone that I've talked to, I've told them that we will have that closed.
Okay.
And we thought longer, maybe for the whole event. And some people wanted that, but I thought this year, we add the parade, see the success of that, the additional draw of people. If it's well received, then maybe next year, we can expand that out and make it a little more of a street festival, but afterwards, we'll just stick to the sidewalks.
Very good. Very good.
That's it.
Can I have a motion to accommodate?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the closing of what was at Thurman Street from Main to Oak from 5:00 to 7:00 and from Main Street to Morgan from 5:30 to 7:00. Roll call, vote on that.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Item nine is on the agenda, festival planning for a chamber's 90th birthday in 2013. Jan Fuller, if you'd like to visit. How are you, Jan?
I'm good. How's everybody?
Good.
I'm actually not here to ask for anything for once, so relax and enjoy. Our chamber is going to be celebrating their 90th birthday slash anniversary time serving Warrenton area in 2013. I actually have a list of every president from 1923 on, every chamber president. Don't ask me the other.
They're going to read them all for you.
Beginning with 1923. No, but I will have that put on a poster so people can see it and I'm sure there will be a lot of names that many of you recognize from back then. We are going to celebrate all year long, but what we had originally decided was we would do a festival. And this was before you decided not to do Catch the Glow, so this worked out. But our dates are going to be June 1st and 2nd. It's still kind of in the planning stages and a little bit fluid, but we originally thought we'd have it in three locations. Now it looks like we're just moving to one. So like I said, it's still kind of moving into different parts and pieces, but we're hoping to bring a family-friendly event to Warrenton area and we're hoping that it will bring a lot of people from outside the community in. Some of the things that we're doing, we're doing a craft fair, oh, it'll be out at the fairgrounds, and we're doing a craft fair, our home and garden show, a car show, we'll have some quilt displays. We're going to do some competitions, like a little mister and little miss and talent show, barbecue contest, some tournaments like washers and/or horseshoe, firefighter's challenge. One of Terry's favorites is the cast iron skillet throwing competition. She's already working out for that one. We'd like to get music from our local talent and petting zoo, kids' corner. I want to get a banjo or a fiddle competition here. I think that'll be a lot of fun, but we'll see. We also would like to get Primitive Area, which is the mountain man teepee kind of thing, but we have some logistics to work through on that one. We are going to do the 5K race and that will be downtown. So I will be back closer to that, to ask for street closing closer to that time. But for now, I just wanted to let you all know, this is what we're planning and we are welcoming any and all ideas. Nothing will be, you know, thrown in the can until we've exhausted every avenue that we need to do. So we want to make this very well-rounded, a great two-day event that hopefully will just be the first annual, but we're not going to call it first annual because you never know. So we're just going to see how this goes, celebrate 90 years, and then check in for 2014.
Couple of questions for you. Originally, I heard you were going to, or your event was going to be at multiple locations.
Right.
Has that changed now?
That has.
Both days, or is it going to be at the?
Both days at the fairgrounds. And if WDA chooses to do something downtown, we will do that. The Outlet Center, we've had a little trouble trying to get that kind of ironed out, so we've decided concentrate where we're, you know, where we can be sure we can be.
Okay.
So that's what we're planning.
We're hearing great things that you all are putting some great events together, so I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
I think it'll be successful.
I hope so, too. Like I said, if there's any ideas that you have or, you know, if you hear from anybody in the community that would like to help participate in this, we're welcoming volunteers and people who wouldn't mind coordinating something or other.
I would compliment you. One of the ideas you've already done and accomplished tonight, which is bringing this forward early enough that any kind of issues can be thought out ahead of time as to how it pertains to the city's code and ordinances and hopefully we can, I look forward to drawing people into the community.
Absolutely.
Hoping so. I did meet with the department heads and they gave me some great insight as to, are we headed down the correct path? And I feel very comfortable with that.
Good.
Yeah. They were very accommodating and shared ordinances and things like that because we want to not have any surprises down the road.
Sure.
We want to do it right.
And we want to be as supportive as possible.
And you have been.
What you all are doing is good for the City of Warrenton and all the residents. We want to be as much a part of that as we can.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments for Jan, from any of the board members? Thank you, Jan.
Thank you very much.
Next item on my agenda is item 10, Terry Thorne, Director of Operations and Finance.
My first item for you this evening is a report from the Tourism Commission meeting on October 23rd. They met and considered a request from the City of Warrenton. Brad was there and talked about the Christmas wreath decorations. Originally, in their budget, tourism had chosen, at the time we put budgets together, to split the Christmas decorations up into three years and replace those. But after speaking with Brad and having a lengthy discussion, they decided that what they'd like to do is reallocate some of their budgeted funds and actually replace all of the Christmas decorations this year and get it done all at one time. So their recommendation was to fund up to $14,000, which will purchase 24 Christmas wreath decorations, which are very similar to the ones we currently have, except that these have LED lights, which we understand from Brad is quite an improvement over what we currently have. They will be requesting to do a budget amendment to reduce the funds that were originally budgeted for Catch the Glow by $7,000 and to reduce the interstate attraction sign light item in their budget by $2,000, thus bringing the $5,000 they have currently budgeted up to the $14,000 that they approved for this project.
Okay. Any comments or concerns? Are you wanting a motion for the board to approve that?
I did have one question. The interstate attraction signs reduction, where are they coming with that reduction?
Because we've not had usage. We have more money budgeted than what we've utilized and this actually leaves some... and this actually leaves some additional funds should others come forward to use it.
Okay.
But we've spent a very small amount of that money thus far.
Are you talking about billboards?
No, that would be the signs out at, just before you get to the exit, the small signs that list the hotels and restaurants.
I thought they were billboards.
That's what I thought.
No, not billboards, these are those small signs.
So are you wanting a motion from the board?
Yes, please.
To approve those? I'll entertain that at this time.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to approve the reduction in Catch the Glow funds of 7,000, and approve the interstate attraction signs reduced by 2,000, for a total budgeted approval of 14,000?
Correct.
Any other discussion or questions on that? We'll have a roll call vote.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
My next item for you is to propose a request for a letter of support for Turning Point. Ellen Reed, the new director there, had approached us, they are going to be submitting for a grant, emergency solutions grant, and this letter of support will help them by ensuring that the local community supports the project that they're doing there. She also is asking for a letter of support from Warren County. There is no financial commitment, simply just a letter saying that the city of Warrenton supports this grant application.
Have we monetarily always supported Turning Point?
We have always monetarily supported them, and in the past, actually had a grant that the city was the recipient of up until last year, and they changed the grant process so much that it put the city in a position where they, they had to be involved in the daily almost oversight of what was happening at Turning Point. So at that point, the board made the decision, rather than to do that, we made some changes, I think Turning Point, that's when we added a $2 amount for each court case that now goes to them on a monthly basis, and she has just gone to some seminars related to the grant process, and they now have the ability to apply for grant funding directly as opposed to it having to go through the city. So that's what they're doing.
Okay. So we need a request for a letter of support from the board from Turning Point in the form of a motion, or just a verbal agreement?
I think typically we do a motion.
Do a motion, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to approve a letter of support for Turning Point. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
That's all I have this evening, thank you.
Operational updates?
Don't have anything?
Nothing?
On that, nothing came up at the last minute.
I'm going to Chief Howtishell.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. The first thing I have this evening is to talk about a unexpected color change to the patrol cars. At the last meeting, you all approved the capital items of purchasing two new cars, and I placed the order with Don Brown, only to get an email back telling me that the blue is no longer available. And apparently, that's somewhat of a temporary situation, but a long-term temporary situation due to the fact that the MICA used in there is very scarce because of a tsunami. So, it's really just about the paint not being available, they haven't completely discontinued that color, they just don't have the ability to put that color paint on the cars. So, in looking at the choices that we had left, which were red, black, gray, tan, and white, the closest really to keep it somewhat uniform was the black. So, just so you all know, we're gonna have a couple of black police cars, they're gonna look a little weird, but, you know, at least they'll be fairly close.
So there's really no alternative of having repainted or anything like that?
No, and apparently all, yeah, all of the car manufacturers are having the same issue. Same problem.
What was the timeframe delay? Could we hold off on purchasing for three months, or something along those lines?
I don't know exactly, but he wasn't real positive about this model, you're having them at all.
We might have to live with black for a while.
Hopefully, short term.
Okay.
The second thing I have is the Eastern Missouri Law Enforcement Training Academy's agreement. We entered into a prorated agreement back in February or March, and that one has since expired. We also discovered that there is no language in that original version to include an automatic renewal for, so that's why we're going through this again. So this is essentially the same agreement that we signed with them back in March, with the addition on the very last page of an automatic annual renewal. Everything else is the same.
Chief, I looked over this, what is the, I see in paragraph nine or section nine, that talks about the, the basic training, which I'm assuming putting, putting a civilian through the basic training. Is there, does this ensure us so many free seats at so many, because I'm not seeing where that is spelled out?
That, that is in that paragraph. After three years on their program, will actually get a free seat to train somebody?
But I'm saying, on just the continuing ads, is, if you wanna send a candidate down to St. Charles County or one of your employees for a continuing ed course, is that free as part of this contract?
Most of those are, yes. Some, some trainings, because they have to contract outside of their situation, cost us money, but generally, the in-service training is free of cost.
So, so most of our involvement in this is more of a continual education training?
Right, this, this is our continuing ed, so the guys get their 48 hours every three years.
My only concern with it is that, that it's not spelled out how many courses that are gonna be free seats. I, I see that where it's spelled out, that we would get a reduced seat if it is a special continuing education and career development training programs periodically offered, but I'm not seeing anything, where it specifies what training and what courses are actually included in the hundred-dollar per sworn person price. And I, I know that there are some, but I just wanna make sure that this contract is going to provide for the post-certification needs of the department without additional expenditures.
Right, and it, I believe that it will, you know, just in looking at their catalog of courses that are available. We've, we've used it over the past six or eight months that we've had it, and we'll obviously use it again in the future, so it, it helps to fill in the gaps where the PLS and the in-service that we do already in-house, we don't get that done.
Okay.
Just the training.
Any other comments from any of the boards? We'll entertain a motion for approval to sign the Eastern Missouri Law Enforcement contract.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer, for the approval to sign the Eastern Missouri Law Enforcement contract. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero, or to one, I'm sorry, with Alderman Cornell voting a dissenting vote. Is that it, Chief?
That's it, sir.
Item 12 is Guy Gimers from the Public Works Director Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, I have a few items that we need to approve. First item, the salt bid. Morton's salt was the low bid.
Don't you have any salt left from last year? We, we had a mild winter.
Yeah, we have, we have one bin full.
One bin full.
What's your prediction on snow this year, Guy?
None.
None?
No prediction, no prediction.
No prediction or no snow?
No, no, all ice.
It's quite a bit higher than our budgeted amount, it looks like.
We budgeted, estimated 300 tons, and that locks the price in, so I'm purch, I wanna purchase 156 tons at $8,906, and with this estimating at 300 tons, that'll lock that price in, so.
So if we're not?
With a bid total, though, is?
If you're not predicting any weather, then why are we buying so much?
In case it does.
So the 17,000 is the actual, so I'm a little confused.
At, at the bottom where it says you?
Well, I see where you said the 8900, but Morton's salt is 17,127 as far as the bid.
They were the low bid in general per, per ton.
But we're only gonna purchase?
Okay.
156 tons?
That's correct.
Got you, okay, thank you.
But we're reserving the ride at the same price?
At that same price, got you.
We need more than the?
I'm a little thick-headed sometimes.
It's okay.
No, I, I was confused also, so we're all thick-headed.
All right.
So the amount you're wanting approval there on is the 8900?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. If there's no other questions, we'll?
All right, with that said, I'll go with the recommendation of Public Works Director to accept the lowest bid from Morton's Salt Incorporated. Initial order will be 156 tons at 57.09 a ton, which brings us to 89.06, oh, four.
Sorry, Guy, I was reading it wrong as well.
That's okay.
Second.
Lot of salt.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, approved, or seconded by Alderman Flake, to approve the order of 156 ton at 57.09 a ton, for a grand total of $8,906.4. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Next item to sender bid? We only have received one bid for that.
I guess I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Bobby Helscher Trucking for $10.35 a ton. I guess we're going with 200 ton, that'd be $2,070.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Kendall, to accept the low bid from Bobby Helscher Trucking in the amount of 200 ton, $10.35 a ton, for a grand total of $2,070. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Next item I have is the hydro excavator. We had two bidders on that, Key Equipment came in at low bid, and that was budgeted for 65,000.
Came in quite a bit under.
Can you tell me what that, what that really is?
That's true.
Is this a new item that we don't have now?
That's correct. Our big back truck has this same item, but it's, this is a smaller unit, and it's to find gas lines, foam, pothead, pothole and things, so we don't hit them.
Is this the water jet?
Water jet, and it, it's a subsoiler.
Makes a big mess.
Makes it in the mud and stuff it up.
Makes a big mess, yeah.
Are we just leasing it?
Excuse me?
Is this just called for leasing?
No, that's a purchase.
That's a purchase, 'cause it says total 36-month lease.
From the left.
From the left side.
That's a, that's a print, man. I think you checked that.
With typo?
Yes.
Yeah, pretty expensive leash, huh?
Chief, any other questions or concerns about Guy's recommendation?
Okay, I'll put a motion to go to the recommendation of Public Works Director, accept the bid from Key Equipment for a 550-gallon trailer-mounted vacuum hydro excavation unit for the amount of $53,099, and we had budgeted 65,000, so that's a good bid.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Kendall, to approve the bid from Key Equipment Company for a 550-gallon trailer-mounted vacuum hydro excavation unit in the amount of $53,099. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Next item I have is a new service truck with utility tool body, and that went through We budgeted 35,000, come in at 34,873.60.
Is this coming into the fleet, is this replacing a vehicle?
It's replacing, it's replacing one of our vehicles.
And it was through state bid?
That's correct.
Is this, is just one person bid?
It's through state bid, yeah. It's through a state bid.
Oh, through the state bid.
Right.
Make a, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a service truck with utility tool body from West Brothers Chrysler in the amount of $34,873.60 per state bid.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake, to approve the bid from West Brothers Chrysler for a utility truck. What else did you say under, John?
Uh, from West Brothers, through state bid.
Through the state bid, okay. For a 2013 Chevy 3500, and the bid amount is $34,873.60. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Last item I have is a skating unit for Fairlane Lift Station. We're gonna install that unit so we can watch it on our monitors. It's gonna work the same way the wells do.
Came in quite a bit under a bid, or under a?
14,862, we bid at 22,000.
They had 22,000 budgeted, and this is the only?
That's a sole vendor, that's correct.
Is this the only lift station that we have that program on?
It will be, that's correct, yeah. We're trying to get each one with the unit on there, with the cost of it.
If there's no other questions, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Public Works Director to purchase a skating unit for the Fairlane Lift Station from ECC, which is Electric Controls Company, in the amount of $14,862.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallo, to approve the bid from ECC, Electric Controls Company, in an amount of $14,863. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
You all have the claims report in your packets. The total amount to pay is $320,755.43, so I'm asking for people to pay the monthly bills in that amount.
Any concerns or questions over the bills?
Make a motion, we pay the bills?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Flake to pay the bills in the amount of $320,755.43. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay, the next item I have is the Crider utility billing adjustment. Guy and I had looked at the usage. You guys have this in your packet also, the adjustment. We based the domestic usage on the readings that were provided by Mr. Ferguson. He had a couple weeks' worth of usage, and so we got an average daily amount of consumption for the water in the sewer domestic. And then we based the irrigation usage on an irrigation system of similar size that was at the Wentzville facility. So that's how we got those amounts for the July, August, and September billing periods. The total corrected bill for those billing periods would be $804.68. So the adjustment, including removing a penalty adjustment, we are recommending is They had already made a payment, so this would leave a credit on the account of $416.22. We have met with Mr. Ferguson and provided a copy of this to him, and his folks had approved this recommendation, so we're asking for your approval.
So Crider's good with this solution?
Yes.
So let me see if I'm following you correctly here. What the final bill with them is gonna be, the $18,352.73?
The final bill is $804.68.
Oh, okay.
And they paid 12.20, so they actually have... Excuse me. Have a credit with the city, correct?
Okay. So the $804.68 is the final bill?
Correct. For these three million dollars.
I'm following you now. And your comment, Alderman Cornell said Crider's fine with this?
Yes.
They accept it and they understand that? I think that's pretty fair.
Mm-hmm.
Fair with them on that, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's not bad.
Or you needed a motion from the board?
Yes.
To accept this adjustment? Entertain one at this time.
Make a motion to approve the proposed adjustment of $18,352.73 to the utility bill for Crider Health Center. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the adjusted billing for the Crider Health Center, utility billing adjustment of $18,352.73. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Would you like to vote on this, Alderman Tallo?
Yeah, I'll go over.
Okay.
Was there any discussions that I needed to vote on?
No, no, we pretty well accepted that.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Phone service agreement?
Yes. We would like to enter into an agreement with CenturyLink for service, products and service on our mortel telephone system. The cost of the agreement is $2,476.80, which would be for a one-year period. The telephone system, our understanding from talking to the sales representative, is that the mortel system that we currently have is going to be becoming obsolete because